May I have your attention, please? The opportunity to sign up for public comment or public hearing expires when the Chair calls the meeting to order. Sign-in sheets are located on the podium. Please switch all electronic devices to silent mode. The meeting will begin shortly.
I would like to call the regular scheduled meeting for Fairfield County Council to order, Monday, May 8, 2023, 6:00 PM, Winsboro, South Carolina. Next, we'll have the pledge of allegiance of all the council members and everyone in attendance would stand. Thank you, everyone. Next, we are down to the approval of the agenda. It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect, 7-0 on number three, approval of the agenda. Next, we are down to number four, invocation by Mr. Pastor Leonard Simmons, Bethlehem AME Church.
This day, we thank you for what you have done for us and how you're watching over this nation, but we pray, God, our special blessing upon this council, these leaders of this particular county, we ask you, God, to strengthen them where they're weak and build them where they're torn down. We pray, God, for unity, that we all come together into agreement. You asked us, you told us according to your word, oh God, men are to always pray and not faint. And we calling on you right now. You say we have not because we ask not. And we come asking you, God, for a divine deliverance. Ask you to cover our youth, our young leaders everywhere. Children are dying. Men's are angry for no reason, and we need your help. We need your covering. We need this demon cast out, cast it down right now because we know you are able, you're getting our attention, and we come calling on your name and believing you, God, for miracles right now. And as the meeting, oh God, resume tonight, touch every mind, every heart, bring it into unity, that we may touch and agree and move forward. These are the blessing we asking in Jesus' name. Amen and amen.
Thank you very much, Pastor Simmons. Next, we are down to item five, approval of minutes. This is for the budget work session, April 3, 2023, and the regular meeting, April 24, 2023.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect, 7-0. Number five, approval of minutes. Number six, public presentations, there are none. Next, we are down to seven, first public comment session, Dr. Roberts.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of council. One person signed up to speak, Randy Bright.
Is this on? Okay. Thank you. Randy Bright, Ridgeway, District 1. Again, I'm disappointed in our ordinances that are listed in this agenda. No detail, know what it's going to do for the county. We don't even know where the mega park's going. Well, we do know, but we don't list it. I do have one solution. Since you're heck bent on not including any details in the agenda, why not post a link on Facebook when you post the agenda on Facebook? If you can post the link to the details, that would help citizens not only prepare to discuss these ordinances, but it also gives us long-term looks at it. And if we're looking to be transparent, this is an easy way to do it. It helps the citizens, it helps you, it helps the citizens help you. But we need to know. We can't just have you guess what it is. And of course, the other part of the agenda, as far as the ordinances are concerned, and the multi-park, two questions I got to ask on that, besides all the other aforementioned questions, how's it going to affect us, et cetera, and what do we have to do for it? The real questions of that part of the agenda are, number one, why not Fairfield? Why it has to be some other county? Why not Fairfield with our location, our people, and all the expansive land? Why does it have to be crammed into Blythewood instead of the bountiful areas that we have to offer? The bountiful areas that we have to offer that are located to transportation, Charlotte, Columbia, et cetera? Why not Fairfield? And then the second question is, when is it going to be Fairfield? Wouldn't that be nice if we were on somebody else's agenda? That's all I have to say, and hopefully that sinks in. Why not Fairfield and when Fairfield? Thank you.
Next, we are down to number eight, public hearings. There are none. Number nine, ordinance resolutions and orders. Item eight, second reading ordinance, number 811, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a revised and restated multi-county industrial park agreement between Fairfield County, South Carolina, and Kershaw County, South Carolina, ratifying the existing park boundaries and other related matters. It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion on item 9A?
Can you explain it? I'm sorry. Can you explain it so we can understand it?
Yes, ma'am, Mr. Chair and members of council. What you have before you tonight, ordinance number 811, what this is, is this is basically a renewal of the multi-county industrial park that Fairfield County has with Kershaw County. Statute requires that these be updated periodically by law, so that's what this ordinance is doing. It takes the already existing multi-county industrial parks. Those are creations of statute. They're not, it's basically a means by which the county can designate certain parcels of land for economic development and industrial use, and then it allows those particular projects to receive benefits such as a fee in lieu of tax agreement, a special source revenue credit agreement, et cetera. So what this particular ordinance is doing is just re, in essence, renewing the already existing agreement that was originally entered into in 1996, and it will allow this to go forward for another 20 years. And what ends up happening is, is those properties that are in these multi-county industrial parks, if they have a fee in lieu of tax agreement, the county, Fairfield, for example, will receive 1% of the revenues for those projects that are located in Kershaw County, and then the opposite is true. So it's basically a 99 to 1 split. That's what the statute allows for, and that's customary across the state.
So does Fairfield County have some skin in the game? If Kershaw has skin in their game?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And so what happens is, Kershaw has designated certain properties that they have placed in the park. Fairfield has designated certain properties that they have placed into the park, and so each county is going to receive revenue stream both from the properties that they have, they're going to get 99% of that which is located in Fairfield, but they'll also get 1% of the revenue that's generated for properties in Kershaw. And Fairfield has multiple of these types of agreements. It's very common to have these all throughout the state.
And in similar to the one we have with Richland County and...
Yes. Yes, these are the exact same terms, yes, sir.
And we, and the recent deal, we were going to receive like a million dollars on, was it Richland?
Yes, sir. What ended up happening is there was an agreement to allow to enter into a multi-county park agreement with Richland County as related to the redevelopment of the old Richland Fashion Mall, there in Forest Acres. And we had Ms. Luther, who was assisting the county, and the preliminary figures indicated that over the life of the agreement would be an additional $1 million in revenue for Fairfield County.
All in favor of 9A?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect, 7-0 on 9B. Item 9B.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. First reading by title only, ordinance number 813, an ordinance of Fairfield County Council, so as to provide for the creation of the County Road Maintenance Fund, the recurring imposition of a road maintenance fee, and the use of the revenues collected from the road maintenance fee and other related, other matters related thereto.
This is no discussion by title only. All in favor? All opposed? Oh, I'm sorry. It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect, 7-0 on 9B. 9C, first reading by title only, ordinance number 814, an ordinance by Fairfield County Council to amend and restate ordinance number 674, roads, highways, and bridges, and other matters related thereto. No discussion?
Most to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect, 7-0 on 9C. Item number 10, board and commission minutes for information only, A, Aeronautics Commission, March 21, 2023. 11 board and commission appointments, none. 12 old business, none. 13 new business, none. 14, we are down to the county administrators' report.
Good evening, council. Some of you have probably already seen at our recycling centers, the signage that says no concealed weapons allowed. The reason this was done, just to let you know, we had had several of our attendants raise concerns of citizens entering the recycling sites and making sure that they saw their weapon in an intimidating manner. So the signs went up because we want to protect our attendance, and we want them to feel as safe as possible. So that has happened several times at at least three of our sites. So wanted to let you know that. Also, on April 26, 2023, I received an email from the Officer Controller General stating that they know that holding our funds could reportedly likely cause severe challenges in funding, and also they took into consideration inflationary pressures, so they've decided to release our funds. And the state treasurer, excuse me, our county treasurer has already been receiving those funds, and the funds that were withheld from us was approximately 4.9 million. So she has received those funds. Thank you.
Social report, none. Item 16, second public comment session, Dr. Roberts.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. One person signed up to speak, Randy Bright.
Randy Bright, Ridgeway, District 1. I'm keenly disappointed in our financial situation. We've talked about this before. We have now gone through two audits, heavy fines, chaos. Last two years, we didn't know where we stood financially, and it hurt us in trying to run the counties. We heard we got plenty of money, then we heard we don't have any money, then it flipped back and forth, and who knows? No one knew where we were, and no one knows today where we were. $5 million withheld from us. There's not one citizen in this county that can trust our financial situation going forward. We're using the same auditor that didn't fix the problem last time. In fact, it's even, apparently even worse now. We've got to get a plan together so that we know where we stand financially. We've pushed two budgets behind. The last budget was a wreck, and hopefully this one won't, but we're way behind in the budget process because of this. I have a couple of quick suggestions, by the way. I still have three minutes, according to this. We have a couple of suggestions to fix these problems. Number one, let's make the finance committee a real finance committee, where they review our finances every month. I would also request that you add some citizens to that committee. Don't give them voting power, but give them consulting power. There's a lot of people that know finances out there and have extreme experience with this. And we add these citizens to this committee, and let's review the monthly reports every month. Let's have, of course, we keep talking about actually producing monthly reports. Dawn's giving the example, York County does it, Bamberg does it, other counties do it. So there's plenty of examples, and of course, as I said before, we have our CFO from our hospital that did it for years and knows how to produce monthly financials. So you produce a monthly financials, and then you actually have a team that goes over them within the county every month, so we know where we stand, and that we can start holding people accountable for accuracy in our accounting. That's the only way we're going to do it. Well, I had a lot more to say, and according to this, I got three minutes, but okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bright. Next, we are down to item 17, county council time. Any council members wish to speak? Mr. Ruth?
Thank you, Doug. You're getting it good now. Ms. Johnson, what's the update on the audit? Sorry.
Honestly, Mr. Ruth, I'm in wait mode. We've given them all the documentation, and I was told this past Friday that I could possibly have a draft, so I'm still waiting on the draft, but I am in contact with the auditor that's assigned to us. So I'm just waiting on a draft so finance can quickly review what's put in the draft and tie it back to what we have in our general ledger system to make sure we're all in agreement. And so that's where we are now.
Okay. And I kind of knew you had told me that. I just wanted to be out there so everybody could hear. And, but anyway, I want to tell you this, I've had a lot of compliments on the litter being picked up throughout the county.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you working hard to get that done. I know that one of the grant from DOT was part of it and the county...
Yeah. One of the grants was from Keep, Keep South Carolina Beautiful. Yeah, Primera Pride. And then we also, DOT entered into a contract to have litter picked up as well, and we also have building maintenance, they have a crew out as well on the weekends picking up litter.
And they're using inmate?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Well, they're getting a lot of compliments, so that's really good for the county. And also, I appreciate you helping with the town Ridgeway's public bathrooms. They had a time in the council, we're helping, and that's a good way of all working together, you know, the government entities. Let's see what else I could ask you. In our, I don't know if it's the right time or not, but the committee meeting for tomorrow night for the animal ordinance has been canceled?
Yes.
Are you going to mention that, and do we need to reschedule that?
Yes, it's been canceled because we also know we have another meeting with the joint water sewer, and so it wouldn't give us enough time to talk about the animal ordinance, so we're going to reschedule that and then announce that.
Next week sometime maybe, or...
It may have to be a little bit the week after.
Couple weeks.
I'm not sure yet.
Okay. And I, you know, somebody, I think Mr. Bright mentioned a while ago, why not Fairfield? I think a big part of that reason is the infrastructure we don't have and we should have had, and that's something we really got to pursue hard because I think we missed an opportunity, and like Mr. Robinson said the last time, I think, you know, scout should have and really could have been ours had we been ready. So we can't look backwards, we got to look forward and move on, and we can't let another opportunity pass us up. That's all I got. Thank you.
I do.
Ms. Waring.
Ditto on the picking up the trash. I'm getting calls about that, so I don't know who's in charge of it, but they're doing a flipping good job. That's all I'm going to say, because I don't like trash on the road, so I think it looks nice. But anyway, the, this was brought up to me last week, week before last, after the meeting, the big sign up there in front of Nationwide, the billboard, yeah, that thing. Can we put, I don't know, can we run some positive stuff about what Fairfield County's doing, picking up the trash? Show some people picking up the trash. I mean, show them what we're doing.
Yes, ma'am. We are in the process of getting the pricing for that.
Okay. Just some good stuff that's happening, something besides picking up the trash, but I mean, you know.
I got you.
Like the summer night thing that's coming up, advertising that up there. I don't know, you know, just stuff that's going...
Yeah, that would be the town of Winsboro, and they would have to advertise that. We can do county things.
Well, some county stuff that's positive would be good. Thank you. That's all I got.
Ms. Johnson, just to bring it up, we are going to have to pay for it now, being that we don't own the land, correct?
Yes, we did have it for free when we owned the property, but now since it's been sold, we were quickly told that we would have to pay for advertising now. Yes.
One more thing. I don't know, Ms. Johnson, who was responsible for this, but thank you. Whoever did, that helps. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
With the joint water and sewer, you know, Fairfield County is paying 75% of the cost, and we only getting 20-some percent of the say-so because of, we have two people, Winsboro have two people, and Ridgeway has two people. And I just don't think that's fair for the county to pay 75% of the cost and only have about 20-some percent of the say-so.
Yes, sir. That was actually under a cost-sharing agreement that was done... That was actually under a cost-sharing agreement that was done, and the participants, the committee members at that time voted and agreed on that percentage, but we can go back and revisit that, definitely.
First, I want to correct a misstatement from the public comment. We do have a new auditing company. We do not have the same auditing company during our auditing. What I want to say tonight is, I read a devotional book that called the day the bread, and I recently read an article in it that said something like this. The newspaper declared that Pep was, had taken the life of a cat blown to the governor's wife. Pep was a rambunctious young Labrador Retriever owned by the Pennsylvania governor back in 1920. The dog was sent to East State Penitentiary where he was mugshot and given a prisoner ID number. When the newspaper reporter heard about it, he made up a cat story because the report appeared in the newspaper. Many people believed Pep was really a cat killer. Sometimes our human nature calls us to want to believe everything about others that aren't true. Yet, even when others believe untruth about us, God still gives us for good, uses us for good. The governor actually sent Pep to prison so he could be friends with the inmate, and there he served many years as a pioneer therapy dog. God's purpose for our lives still stands regardless of what others say or think. When others gossip about us, remember that his opinion and his love for us is what really matters most. Recently, an article came out about Ms. Warington and my statement at the last meeting. I can honestly say that we were not aware of what the others were going to say. Sometimes what you stand for and believe must be addressed. We did not blast the complainers direct, we did not blast the complaint directed at us. We were just simply asking those doing the criticizing to be more encouraging and less judgmental. Also, in reference to us not being transparent, if you review, if you review our last meeting, Mr. Pauli addressed the search for an administrator. He stated that the process had started. By the way, I'm probably the dumbest person up here. Please answer me this question. Does it make sense to bring a new administrator in now and drop him or her in a chaotic situation with our present audit and financial problems? Or does it make sense to correct it and bring them in in a less chaotic situation? Also, some make it seem as though the present council and administrator created the audit and financial problem. Newsflash, we did not. We are only trying to correct it. Another dumb question, if the state or federal government was auditing you, would you tell them to hurry up or just tell them to forget it? When you refer to residents in your comment or you're saying that the vast number of the citizens are complaining, or is it just a handful? Sometimes silence is a sign of consent. I could not not say something. Thank you, and God bless you.
Mr. Robinson?
I wasn't going to say anything, but being that Mr. Gilbert brought it up, I would have to agree with you. I didn't know you guys were going to speak at the last meeting, you know, not Mr. Ruth. But on a serious note, you know, the thing is, this said outlet decides to play words games with council, and this hadn't just started. This has been going on a while, and you guys know it. You know, my question is, are we going to let it continue by financial, we are financing it, am I correct? Do we finance said outlet? Are we going to continue to finance something that continues to bash us?
Thank you to all the council members. The only thing that I have is, May 13th, this coming Saturday, the airport is having a Wings and Wheels Festival, and I encourage everybody to attend. It's a nice festival for everybody. I think it's from 10:00 AM to 3:00, 2:00, 3:00 PM at the airport, Wings and Wheels Festival. And Sunday is Mother's Day, so I just want to take time to thank all the mothers we have here and all the mothers out there. A happy Mother's Day. Next, we are down to executive session, which is none. I entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded to adjourn. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero to adjourn. Have a good night.